The Perry City Council Work Session for March the 15th, 2021. We have four. Item three on our agenda this evening are items for review and discussion. Item 3A is from the Department of Administration. 3A1 is the presentation of the 2020 Audit Report. And Mr., we have Mr. Edwards with us this evening. Is that correct, Ms. Eaton?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Mr. Edwards. Glad to have you with us again.
Well, that was very quick. I wasn't expecting to be up here so quick.
We get your words and foremost.
I love it. I love it. Appreciate you all having me here this time today. As I've done in the past, I'm here today just to kind of give you quick and dirty highlights of what we have this past year as always. Number one, the first thing that I should share with you that our report is indeed a clean report, meaning that we do believe the financial report presented to you this evening is indeed materially correct. You look at your balance sheet, you look at your income and expenses, you look at your cash flows and all your disclosures, everything's like it should be, so I feel very good about that. The city has for many years been getting recognized by the GFLA for putting together a very good, comprehensive and a financial report, and that should be the case at the end of this year. I don't see anything to get in the way of getting that important recognition that you all have in fact. When we look at the numbers, the city's a good sized city, there's a lot of things going on around here. If you look at all the different funds that the city has, we talk to water, sewers, land, the stormwater, all those kinds of general funds, squaw, everything, you rope it all up. The city has about $134 million of assets. Now, of course, before we get too excited, that's not all cash. That's a lot of infrastructure, a lot of fixed assets, those kind of things. But you do have about $13 million worth of cash in investments. That's a good place to be as a June 30 financial reporting entity. You've got equity in that $134 million, about $95.5, $96 million of equity. So again, probably as I've said to you in the past, if you want to bet, I've probably said this to you, it's about you. I would love to personally own. I would love to have $134 million of assets and have equity of $95.5. So it's a great looking situation. When you look again, overall, the city, all funds again, and talk about the total collection of operations, you all have about $39.5 million of revenues this year. $39.5 million. You had about $38.5 in expenses. So you had something just a little short of $1 million worth of net into the bottom line. Again, I think that's a good place to be. Some people might sit there and question why would we ever want to make a bottom line? Well, a city this aggressive as you all are, doing all the things that you're doing, all the initiatives that you have, I think you always have to be adding to the bottom line instead of taking away. A good example of that is this past year, when looking again across all departments, you spent over $13.5 million on your capital assets, on your infrastructure, on your facilities, on your furniture fixtures and equipment, everything. $13.5 million is a pretty significant investment, what community decides and all that, very significant year when you can't invest it. You can't do that unless you have a good bottom line every year to kind of help develop those reserves to be able to do those kinds of things. So that's a good place to be. One other thing I want to mention, think about the big picture of everything, if you have a pension plan here, of course. Most of the pension plans that I see, when I say most, I'm talking like 99% of the pension plans I typically see, they're underfunded, meaning there's always a little margin there. Here's what they've got liability, but they don't quite have enough in it, and lots of times that's around 8%. Not here at Perry, your pension plan right now is being invested very well, everything's working very well. You are 111% funded. Your pension plan is in great shape. That's something I don't get to say to you all, so I just want to say that again. Your pension plan is in great shape. Let even the NBY picture, let's go to just the heart and soul of the government, your general fund, your general fund's in good shape. I don't think it's in shape that I can brag about it, but it's in good shape, it's a healthy place to be. It had about $4.5 million of cash and a little bit short of that in fund balance. So your fund balance, which is what a lot of people in government talk about, one thing about your fund balance is it's very liquid, it's very cash based. Oftentimes I go to governments and I might say, you've got fund balance of ads, but very little of this cash is all receivables and things like that. Yours is liquid, that's a good place to be at June 30. You're a little bit under three months' worth of coverage when you're looking forward to your expenditures. As you know, with the June 30 year in, you've got to get through July, August, September, and sometimes, how deep is the fall? October, November, probably taxes start coming in. Well, you've got to have them aware of all that June 30 to be able to do that. You've got about three months' worth of fund balance, that cash, I was talking about that $4.4, $4.5 million. That represents about three months of operations that you can get through without a dime coming in. That's a good place to be. You know, would I like to be hired? Certainly I would, but it's not necessarily to lead. You correct me to sit there and say, let's raise fund balance. But again, when I look at all the initiatives you all have always had, the investing in your facilities and into your city, it takes a strong fund balance to be able to do that and not have to play on the seasonality of revenues to not have to bear issue with tax anticipation. Y'all are in a good place. I'd love to sit here even better, but again, I think you're in a healthy place.
We agree.
You agree on it. One other thing I mentioned comes to the general fund is it's another thing that just speaks volumes to me, and that is the accountability of all of the budgets. You all put together a budget this past year, of course, during the year you revise as you need to. Management brought things to you to have and then it's made, but at the end of the day, when you look at all your revenues and all your expenditures ranked in the general fund, you are only off by $63,000. That's not a bad place to be, that's always a great even, okay? I think that demonstrates a lot of accountability, I think you've got a good team working with you. To be that close to your budget and actual numbers is a great place to be. One of the last things I'll mention financially is we've looked at your enterprise fund, you've got water, sewer, you've got gas, you've got the stormwater, and you've got solid base. And you've got number one, loan one. But things I take note of at your all terms, I look at things that are highlights to me, and that is, what was the bottom line? As I mentioned before, I think you can keep adding to it as much as possible each year. You all added about $800,000 to your bottom line for those funds, looking at those four funds primarily. Another thing that I like to see is when those kind of funds can sustain themselves with good cash flows. You had over $4 million of positive operating cash flows. What I mean by that is it's a way of trying to reconcile your operating revenues and expenditures to what did it really result in cash? Does cash, you know, you can't really grow and sustain without the cash flows. You all had a very good cash flow in your those very poor funds, and that's a great place to be as well. So again, your general fund's looking good, your NBY fund's looking good, these proprietary funds looking good. I think everything's looking really fine right now at Perry. The last thing I would mention is we always have management points and our findings. We did have a finding this year that we reported in our report, and it really, as I discussed with management just the other day, it really just talks about having a better closeout. When management says to us, we're ready for audit, and we come out here typically mid to late September, at that point, any kind of adjustments that have to be made that are subject to our input, they are reviewed to determine if they are considering material significant to warrant a finding. And we had a couple of them this year that we just need to do better to close some of those out. You know, it's not easy to close out. I mean, you all, like a lot of communities, you have a run cash basis through the year, you're not worried every month about having everything approved, having this perfect situation. That's the way most cities decide, they're dear large cities for that matter, or they run kind of cash basis. What that means is that at the end of the year where you're going to close out, it becomes quite a task, kind of a herdily a task, to have to go through and do all these things and capture all these different rules, and we missed a couple this year. They were easily corrected, but within these statements, it's not like they didn't go uncorrected. But when we had that kind of adjustments, we had to report it to you all as they find them. It's one of those I fully expect to be gone next year. I don't think it's one of those kind of findings that's going to linger. I just think it's one of these things that might have picked up on the closeout this year. You know, it's been quite a year, let's think about it. This time last year, something started, and it's been running this ragged for all the years. So for this finding to be there, I don't think we need to make any big production out of it. We have a lot of things going on, and at the end of the day, the dust has settled, and you all looking very good. So that's kind of how I want to end our report to you this evening, is just share that thumbs up approach to it all. Any questions?
We appreciate that. Those are some kind words. Council members, any questions?
I got one. Could y'all move to Washington tomorrow?
Anyone know if we could move to Washington DC tomorrow? To help them, I suppose.
I was going to say, why would you want to? Well, we've been saying that all of our life, right? I mean, when did we ever say that we were in great shape as a couple of government? I mean, it's been a long, long time. You know, I think we all concern ourselves with a lot of things. You know, you heard me mention that your pension plan is well funded, it's 111% funded. What do you think our FICA does right, and our social security? I mean, all we've been hearing our whole life is how the vets dip it into and grab it. Well, that's kind of like a pension plan, it's our money that we put in it. It's not something that they funded, we funded it, but they're taking it from it. And now what we're going to have to do is we have to have a future generation available to that. That's where we are in federal, and I don't know why they don't have the same accountability on themselves that we locally try to put upon ourselves. It would be nice. I'd be hurt with your thoughts, but I would move to Washington DC.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any other questions, council members, relative to this presentation? Let me say congratulations to our staff for all the hard work that you guys have put into this. This is quite a reflection of how you run the city on a day-to-day basis. And speaking from, I think, I think for the council, from mayor and the council, we say congratulations, this is quite an accomplishment, giving all that we had going on this year, and I agree, within $63,000 of the multimillion dollar budget, it took everybody working every single day. So thanks a lot, we really appreciate what you do each and every day as far as managing our citizens' money. We have to remember that it's not ours, it's taxes that we take from our citizens and we use to support their lives. You guys are doing a phenomenal job of that, so we really appreciate it. We thank you for all the kind words about the audit.
It's easy when they're trying it, so. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Item 3B is the office of the city manager. 3B1 is the presentation of the police recruitment video. Ms. Clark, are you going to do that this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was approached by Chief Lynn to assist with recruitment and police efforts. After discussing a strategic recruitment plan with him and other staff, we filmed and photographed officers for promotional use on the city's website as well as their social media. One of those videos has already been posted. The video featuring Officer Brenna Banks and explosive detective K-9 Nova has already garnered over 800 post engagements and viewed over 2,300 times. The next feature-
Brenna Banks with the Perry Police Department and Patrol Ops.
Go ahead.
You want me to play it right now?
Yeah, go ahead and play it. Sorry, I came back here. So one of the awesome things about the Perry Police Department is it has such a family atmosphere. We have some really great opportunities for growth. We have specialty units like the K-9 unit, you can become a school resource officer, you can work in CID. And Nova right here is our only explosives detection lab, and the rest are narcotics and tracking. One of the best parts of the job is being able to break our work every day and being able to work on our specialization for the explosives detection and tracking, and just being really an awesome asset to the police department. One of the best things about our city is that we are so community oriented that every time we get out with a citizen, we appreciate you helping our scene. We do focus so much on community oriented policing. Thank you, kind of do have that small town feel in bigger city.
And this is an ongoing effort, so the next feature will be posted soon in the near future. And then, of course, we have plans to continue promoting our officers as well. In addition to the social media and website posts, we will also be super running a paid social media campaign to strategically target qualified applicants within the middle Georgia area as well as beyond to expose them to the Perry Police Department and the career opportunities that they have to offer, prospective and certified officers as well. And I'll turn it over to Chief Lynn about their home building recruitment efforts as well.
So we reached out to Tabitha because she did, we did, she had expertise and we didn't, we knew we had to do. All across our profession right now, it's tough with recruiting. Every chief I talk to everywhere across the nation has more openings than they have employees. So we wanted to take an active approach to trying to counter that. Like Tabitha said, we reached out not only to the general public where we get a lot of our people, but also targeted these assets and police groups as well, that police officers that their current profession, you know, belong to in social media. We've also done a direct mail into every criminal justice program in the state of Georgia, both technical college and traditional college settings. We've asked to be allowed to come into their classes, to send recruiting teams to meet with their students, to come to their job fairs. And, you know, we've always come to the local job fairs, but we're trying to expand our reach across the state with that. And so we've got some officers trained as recruiters. Most of the traditional job fairs have been shut down because of COVID right now, and they still haven't opened back up. But, you know, we're ready to go virtually in classrooms if we can, whatever we can to get our names up there. We send our officers over to teach at different academies so that, you know, where people are going through mandated training, so that they get the Perry name out in front of them. And then we also reach out with academies to see how many pre-service candidates there are. Those are the ones that are going through not being sponsored by an agency, but are putting themselves through. We've got one young man who started the first week of April that we got from Academy in Savannah, who was pre-service after he got out of the military. He just says, gee, I'm going to go through. We had a instructor go teach a class over there, just so happened he wanted to move to middle Georgia, and so we're basically waiting to finish the academy on March 26th, and then he'll start with us the following week. So that's what we're doing to try to step into this void that's been created by lots of different circumstances, most of them beyond our control. But, you know, we've got a good department, we've got a good community oriented department that works well together, does a lot of great things in the community, and so we've got something attractive to sell. We're the best equipment department in this whole area, and our pay is gone. And so we're doing everything we can to highlight that, but still in all, our best recruiters continue to be our officers that we have that work for us right now. I got a call this weekend about a former officer from another department who went to the academy with one of our officers, and they were talking, and he said, I'm ready to get back into law enforcement, and so, you know, I had a conversation with him this weekend. And anyway, we're working really hard to make sure that we get qualified applicants. We interview a lot more than we move forward in the process because we're not willing to let the quality, you know, slip out. We maintain the high standards. Major and I say even if we have to, you know, strap up and go answer calls ourselves, we'll do that before we lower the standards. But we appreciate Tabitha's expertise because we don't have that at house, and I think that was a pretty good rendition. Our next one up is Marthred Scott, who some of y'all met, is the guy that we hired that used to play professional basketball. So I'm looking for that one to be pretty good. Any questions?
Questions, councilman? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Park. Very good presentation. Item 3B2 is the presentation of Food Truck Friday survey. It's different.
Thank you, Perry Council. So it's really hard to believe with the last Food Truck Friday that we had was September of 2019, that seems like forever ago. And I'm very excited to say that we have attempted pretty much to move forward with Food Truck Fridays recently and things, so we're looking forward to that. In the meantime, in this, you know, time of preparation, getting back into events, it's amazing how out of practice I feel, even though when I was on the health fair, I was like, what am I doing? It's been a while. So as we're getting back into having these events, I wanted to take this opportunity to ask the public, you know, for their feedback on what we're doing right with Food Truck Fridays, what we can do better, and just kind of use this time between the events to make it the best that it can be. So I did put out a survey to the community, we put it on social media, and we got a really great response to it. We had almost 200 people respond to that survey, which I don't know if any of you all have put out surveys, but sometimes they can be exciting. We had 10 people to respond, so 200 was a great number for the short time that we did have it out there. And one of the questions that I did ask first and foremost was, have you been to a Food Truck Friday before? Because if they haven't, their feedback might not really matter as much. So thankfully, a vast majority, 93% of the people who responded have been to one of our Food Truck Fridays, not just any Food Truck Friday, but Perry's. So I do feel like the responses that we got are very specific to what we're doing in Perry and how we can improve. I asked a lot of different questions, but I feel like the ones that were the most interesting are the ones that I have on this form. First and foremost, while people are attending our Food Truck Friday, what else are they most likely to do? So the responses were 91% would enjoy live music, 68% also browse our downtown shops. We did share this information with the downtown merchants. I feel like more than 50% of people being willing to go into the shops, that's a great number. Obviously, 98% plan to eat at a food truck, that wasn't a surprise, shocker there. But 79% and 58% are likely to either get alcohol from a restaurant or die at a restaurant. So I do feel like those numbers are still high despite the fact that we have those food trucks there. So people are definitely spending their dollars downtown even when we're bringing these food trucks from outside of our area. One of the other questions that I asked, as I looked at other food truck events around, not just the state of Georgia, but around the country, I did notice that some people, some special events organizers group their food trucks in similar fashion, where you might have like a barbecue alley or seafood street, so that people can know what they're looking for and where they're going. And so I kind of put it out there as to whether people enjoy kind of the mystery of what's around the corner, we have no idea, it's just food trucks at random, or if they liked the idea of having the food trucks more strategically placed so that they could find what they're looking for. And honestly, it was as close to a 50/50 split as I could have asked for, it was 42%, or I'm sorry, 52% were grouped together and 47% were placed at random. So I do feel like the community somewhat split on that, and internally, we will do some brainstorming to see what the best way to move forward is for that. Another question that was asked was what type of music are people enjoying? Obviously, with 91% coming and participating in the live music, we did want to make sure that we're playing the bands that they want to hear. Most well received was rock and roll and decade covers, followed by country, and then DJ and the other, we did ask for feedback on what they might want to see. Common requests were blues, jazz, and worship music, so we will take those into consideration, but I do think the bookings that we have made historically fit those bills of rock and roll, country, and decade covers, so people are getting what they want. The last question that I- The last question that I wanted to highlight was where are they most likely to attend? It's very common for people to say they want to see food trucks here year round. And I do feel like we do a great job of bringing food trucks in year round, even if it's not a Food Truck Friday. A lot of our events do incorporate food trucks at different capacities. So even though we have a high number for, say, October, when we have 88% of people saying that they want to come to a Food Truck Friday, we do have our Oktoberfest that month. So we can encourage people that if they still want to come and eat food trucks, come to our Oktoberfest because we will have them there. So I feel like the months that we currently have, which is April through September, except for this year where we will be starting in May, we are giving the people what they want. The higher numbers where people will be attending are the months where we currently have Food Truck Friday events. So I do feel like our calendar is on par with what the community is wanting to see. I just wanted to share this information with you guys and to show you that we are listening to the community when it comes to our events. And we also have an opportunity on there for them to share and hear their positive feedback, their constructive criticism. And surprisingly, I'm very happy to say that it was overwhelmingly positive responses that people have really missed this event. They're excited to see it come back. They love it. They're very proud of where they've already seen it. So just bravo to us for doing this. Any questions or concerns?
Thank you. Council, questions?
I think all of us are looking forward to the return of Food Truck Fridays. But looking, do you think that us having the International Festival in November, that we could increase the number above the 48% because of the excitement of that?
Yeah, I did see where in March, you know, had a stronger response than November. But I also do feel like it's just because around the holidays, people might be a little bit, you know, more disrupted. There's a lot going on. I think that strategically putting the International Festival towards the beginning of the month in November, it is my hope that we can get that on people's radar before they start making the Thanksgiving holiday plans and whatnot. The International Festival is definitely going to be, in my mind and my hopes, a Food Truck Friday on steroids. People have lots of food trucks there, lots of food vendors, a lot of variety. So for those people who are hoping to see it in November, I want to reiterate that even though it's not a Food Truck Friday event that people want to see year round, a lot of our events still incorporate the things that they're looking for. It still has great music. It still has an atmosphere, whether it's downtown or out of park, that people can enjoy, you know, browsing vendors, browsing businesses. So as much as we all love Food Truck Friday, I want to make sure that the public knows, aside from those states Food Truck Friday events, we also have some other really great big events that they should be coming to as well. I think if people come to a Food Truck Friday, they'll love Oktoberfest. They'll love the International Festival. They'll love the buzzer drop. So we want to get them kind of out of that comfort zone and attending all of our events ideally.
I would personally like to say thank you for all the hard work that I know that you personally put into each one of these events. And I was out, got help there with you. It was cold, but everybody was working hard. And so thank you very much for what you do for us as far as promoting our city and making our special events extremely successful. In fact, it seems like everybody's trying to emulate what you're doing in Perry throughout our Georgia. So that's really a compliment to you and the program that you guys have put together.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm just happy to do events.
I just want to remind us, I know you're doing the best you can, but double your efforts to keep the place clean. These trucks, if they're not clean and someone gets sick, it's going to ruin this whole situation. So please be sure the health department really does a good job.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, that health department has always been a great team effort with us. They make every effort to make sure that at our large events, like our Food Truck Friday, that they are there to inspect the trucks. And they do prioritize, they're very familiar with the trucks that they know they can trust, the ones that are trying to true. But they are also really good at getting after new trucks that we haven't worked with before, or trucks that they've had recurring issues with. Same with our fire marshal. They have an almost photogenic memory of who is on their naughty list and who's on their good to go list. So I have every faith that they really prioritize the ones that they look into and try to keep us as safe as possible. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Very good information.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to making.
Thank you. Me too.
Thank you. Item 3B3 is a debt service process. Mr. Gilmore?
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor Council and your project are two areas we are requesting you to consider for us to go and proceed to okay money for capital projects. The first one deals with water and sewer. And I'll let Ms. King go through those options.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. The options that William Camp, Benon, and Ryder provided to us, we got three options. The first, I wanted to say that we're currently averaging about 2.2 million in available debt service annually. And that we accept about 27 million. Option one that you have in your board pack is a GFO loan. We're estimating 1%. We don't know the exact percentage of the GFO loan, but estimating 1%. GFO does require 2% cost of issuance. Payback good beginning is very, is 2022. The combined total debt service would be 3.2 million. Option number two would be using the Perry Public Facilities Bond issue. And the advantage over the Perry Public Facilities Bond issues is that we have control as to how we structure the debt and how we would, I mean, for average coverage. We could borrow all at once or as needed on a face-by-face basis, depending on what the project needs are and when. The first one is for a 20-year PPF A bond with a combined annual debt service of 3.1 million, which is just like if you go the 20-year GFO loan. Second one is a 30-year PPF A bond combined annual debt service would be 2.6. With this particular one, it is wrapped around current issues. And the longer payback period is much less than the 3.2, rather 2.6 million. And he thinks that option one would be, I'm sorry, option three would be the most advantageous for us. We could also set, we could base that in. One of the advantages of a PPF A bond issue over a water and sewer bond issue is that we could, we do not have to have, have to set up an annual debt service bond if we were to do a water revenue bond issue. So we do have a little flexibility, much so with the PPF A.
Questions? Gilmore, you have additional comments?
Yes, unless you have any particular questions for Ms. King.
Do you have your microphone?
It's not working.
Not?
It's not working.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless you, I think this is a plot, but that's all. Unless you have any particular, thank you. Unless you have any particular questions, the administration recommends to you that you authorize the proceeding with the first part of this, which would be to go with option number three, the 30-year debt through the Perry Public Facility Authority. As you can see, I provided a follow-up on Ms. King. Some of the advantages with that, I think the primary one is that it has the least impact on our water and sewer customers for that debt service. And that's always one of the paramount links we're interested in. The other thing, if you take a look at that schedule, if you can see how we can work around the other existing debt. Everybody see what I'm doing? If you take a look at that, and that gives us more flexibility. The second part is a second memo I gave to you. Should also be in your board pack, which is requesting that you authorize proceeding with getting approximately $800,000 from the Perry Public Facilities Authority for the Langston Road Regional Detention Facility. Mayor, remember, we've been talking about this. You have approved a process to repay that debt. But even with the connection fees or whatever that we collect, we won't have enough money right up front to go ahead for the construction. And so therefore, we recommend to you to also authorize us to approach the Perry Public Facility Authority for these two items. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Mayor Porten?
They have one question. You said it would be the least impact on, I guess, on those that are, you know, our paying customers. What would the impact be on, with this, with this option?
Well, for the 27 million, I'm not quite sure. It'd be generally around what they're paying now. Maybe a slight increase. It depends on how we wind up structuring it over a 30-year period, but we try to minimize that.
Right.
As I provided to you, for a 20-year for the $800,000, that would be approximately $36,700 per year. A good portion of that will be paid by the new growth, you know, coming in. Remember, you talked about setting that process up. Some of it may at least initially have to be picked up by our customers. Existing customers, I'm sorry. But the thing that's very important to remember is that both of these, the purpose for both of these monies is in the East Perry development area, which is going to continue to be very hot, so to speak, with a lot of customers coming in. The more customers that come in, the less percentage-wise, if any, that existing customers are going to have to pay.
Mr. Gilmore, it's also true that looking at the option three, it doesn't have a significant increase on our annual debt service compared to where we are today.
That is correct.
If the other, if you look at the others, it's about a million dollars more than what we would be servicing today. So there would be a burden there as well.
Yes, now you may remember Ms. King talked about, it's not reflective in there, but the partial drawouts that you have. That will also affect how much the debt service would be. Others, you don't draw any more than what you would need at a particular time. And you also have that option, as you mentioned, option number two. But overall, I think option number three is the best.
And if you, you know, our plan is to build a wastewater treatment plant over the next five years. And so we would draw down, if you look at the GFO loan, you actually have to take the full fund with that. And under this scenario, as we continue to build out the line, we would take the drawdown at that time and then we would be responsible for repaying. So I think that that's a real advantage for us going forward is, is being able to not have to take it all upfront and start paying on that side.
One more question. Let me make sure I'm understanding correctly. You said the connection fee for these Perry development will pay for most of the cost. But then there might be a little more cost that that won't cover. And so would that additional cost be taken on by the new growth residents? Or would that also be a cost that would have to be borne by existing customers?
Depending on how it's actually structured, you could have a period of time when the existing customers, system-wide, may have some type of that burden that they would have to pay, but it'd be very small. Because the other, the other funny thing, like the mayor talked about, if you go and you take a look at the option number three, most of the first couple of years is still paying out the existing debt service. Everybody see where I am? Take a look at that chart.
Right, right.
And the newer issue comes in and in essence comes in and replaces as some of the older portion of the debt gets paid up close to them. And that's why we believe that the impact to the existing customers would be a very small effect.
Because if you look at that, the very first year and the very last year of those 30 years, it's almost the exact same number. So there's very little change if you go forward because they're allowing us to pay down on our existing debt and then taking up paying a remainder as the bond gets older or so.
Questions? Does Mr. Gilmore have your confluence to move forward with pursuing, putting these debt services in place? Okay, Mr. Gilmore, you have the conference to move forward with both.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 3B4 is a discussion of a new job classification. Mr. Gilmore, classifications?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Council, in your board back is a memo from me and supporting documentation about a request from Chief Parker as part of his formal succession training about making some adjustments in existing positions. The administration estimates that there will be no budgetary impact for these changes. These are not new positions that are going to be created. As you can see in the information there, the three fire battalion chief positions will be shifted to three new designated positions. Chief Parker is here to answer any questions you have relative to operationally how that go. The administration has no objections to this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Questions, Council, or Chief Parker? Looks to be just a restructuring chief. Do you have any comments for us?
No, sir. You're exactly right. Just a, basically a restructure. Yes, sir.
Okay. Council members, are you agreeable to move forward with restructuring based upon the recommendation of the city manager and the fire chief? Okay, Chief, you guys, you'll move forward.
Thank you, pal. The next step you'll see on tomorrow's agenda as an item referred from here will be a resolution authorizing the establishment of those positions, which is what personnel policy requires.
Thank you. We'll look forward to that. Item four on our agenda is council member. Is this Miss Bynum Grace in, in for us this evening? Doc Aldrich. Mr. Smith?
I'd like to sign for the road to talk about fixing the places on the public road so I got a picture away.
Compliments. Got all the roads fixed over on Center. All the potter. Thank you. Mayor Porten Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, you have anything else for us this evening?
No, sir.
Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Hello, you. Yes, Mayor, I do want to give you all a quick update on our property next door. The lead-based paint asbestos has been fully remediated. We received a clearance letter on that this past week. And the bid is out currently for the demo of the property. We hope to have something back to y'all on that very soon. And also too, and I'm going to let Chief Parker handle this, is my understanding, we have received a request actually pertaining to the property or some of the contents therein. Do you want to take that, Chief?
Yes, sir. We received a letter, an email from Guardian Centers just requesting anybody out there, you know, that deals with them periodically, as we do, might have furniture available that they could use to put in their mock village out there. Nothing that's going to be, you know, taking anybody's house or anything like that. It's going to go out there and so, you know, it could be damaged or wet or shot at with rubber bullets or whatever they use out there, that kind of thing. But there is still a little bit of furniture left in the building next door. And when we walked through it today, it just came to our minds that that may be some stuff that could be donated to the Guardian Center if Mayor Council were to approve that.
Ms. Newby, can we do that?
Would it be the same property, I wouldn't donate it for a potential violation for due use clause? But if it is thrown away and the Guardians Center switches and picks it up out of the trash, it may be a sin.
So when, and I'm chief.
Understood.
I won't leave that one just like. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item five is a carpet item. Ms. King, do you have anything else for us this evening? All right, five, this is Parker, I, Ms. King, do you have anything else for us this evening? Mr. Worley?
Yes, one quick item from Mayor and Council. As most of you are aware, the third round stimulus didn't pass last week, the American Rescue Plan Act. If you're not aware, I'm sure it will be on Wednesday. When you wake up, check your bank account. It should be $1,400 more in there for most of us. But just a quick rundown, we don't have all the facts, all of the information on it yet, but it was signed into law on March 11th, which was last Thursday. A total package of $1.9 trillion, 65.1 billion of which was earmarked for the city specifically. Perry's estimated share of that 65.1 billion is around $5.6 million, which will flow through the state, some of it, the CARES Act money did. It'll be paid in two tranches, 50% of which must be paid to us within 90 days enactment. So within 90 days of last Thursday, we'll get 50% of that $5.6 million, or somewhere about. The other 50% will be available within one year. And all of those funds must be spent by December 31st, 2024. The eligible expenses are very similar to the CARES Act that we had last time, where we got roughly a million dollars, a little less. But there is the addition of two categories, the first of which is the replacement of tax revenues lost to the pandemic, due to the pandemic. And the last category is making investments in water or sewer infrastructure. Like I said, we don't have all the hard numbers yet or exactly our full guidance, but I just want to give everybody an update, and be sure to update more as more information comes out.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Thank you. Mr. Wood? Chief Flynn, anything else for us this evening?
Nothing else, sir, thank you.
Chief Parker?
Nothing further, sir, thank you.
Ms. Mark, anything for us this evening?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Swan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to remind everybody about Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday, April 3rd, and starting at 9:00 AM, we'll have our annual special meat Easter egg hunt. We start registration, it's walk-up registration at 9:00, and at 10:00, the event will start. And at 10:07, it will be done. It takes that quick, that long for all the eggs to be picked up. So we have several groups and resources that'll be lined up along fences, sharing information, and our resource to our citizens. We had a group, one of our Cibetan group, they donated $500 to the, to the event. So Mr. Mayor will present you with a letter to sign, as we say, thank you. And we just completed registration for T-ball, baseball, softball, and youth soccer. So we are running full speed now, and we're excited. And basketball should be concluded in approximately two weeks. So y'all pray for us. We're almost out, almost in the open air. That's all, I want to share, thank you.
And the Easter egg hunt starts at 9:00?
Yes, well, the registration's at 9:00, and we'll start the actual hunt at 10:00. Yes, sir.
Good, that was a fun event. Ms. Sitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Warren, anything from the city clerk's office today?
Actually, GMA is hosting the 2021 Annual Convention, the week of August 6th to the 10th, if you're marking calendars.
Okay. And it's going to be a live event, as I understand it, rather than a burger?
Yes, sir.
And, so I...
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Harden?
Yes, sir.
You're ready? Is there anything, did I miss anybody? Is there anything else to come before us? Or remind you that our next meeting is tomorrow afternoon, 1:00 here at the Event Center. That will be our pre-council meeting. At 6:00, we have our regular council meeting tomorrow. All of our meetings are open to the public, and we encourage your interest and participation. If there's nothing else to come before us this evening, we will, would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you.